...to order at 6:31. And I'll go ahead and wait for it to record it. It looks like John Wilson is on line. I know Jessica said she could not be here tonight, and Oliver also has notified us he cannot be here tonight. And I heard Kelsey is on her way, so finding Sunderland. So, first thing on the agenda, I've kind of added this, and I just want to give you guys just my reasoning for this. I've added to our call to order, motion to approve the agenda as presented. Typically, we have not done that traditionally on this board, but it is considered best practices within Robert's rules. There's a couple of reasons, and I'll just kind of go through why it is I did this. One, there's a lot of items that require good length of time, and even though it's the clerk and the chair and the vice chair and the superintendent putting this together, I understand you folks might have some thoughts or know of things that are going to be said that we might not know of. And that would be the time at the very beginning to say, I think we need a little more time for this discussion, so that you guys are part of that. That also allows us to, if we are looking at the agenda and we say there's too many things, and somebody wants to say let's pull this, or somebody needs to leave early, and we want to rearrange the agenda so that we can bring another item to the front. I just, I feel like it gives you folks at the table a little more opportunity to impact how the meeting goes for the evening. So I don't think there's a vote, I think we're just doing it, adding it to the agenda.
Well, but there's a motion.
Yes, so I have, right, so I'd like a motion.
So I move the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Second, any discussion on that?
Melissa, second.
Lindsay. Did you want to discuss, Jeff, anything in the motion to approve the agenda?
Not to approve the agenda, to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I think this could be a good time to take something off of the consent agenda, rather than approve the agenda as it is.
Okay, I'd like to take the minutes off.
Okay.
And discuss most.
So, Dick, since you made the motion to approve the agenda, would you like to amend the agenda to?
I don't have to, because the consent agenda is lower in the, in the.
Wouldn't we change, isn't the.
Well, okay, if, then I, then I move to approve the agenda, but take the minutes off the consent agenda and make it a separate item.
Thank you. Lindsay, do you concur?
Concur.
Great. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Great, the agenda passes with the minutes removed from the consent agenda. So also, I should add, if somebody thinks we need to add public comment somewhere in the middle of the agenda, again, that's another item that can be changed during approval. I won't look through that every time, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew this time. So, public comment, we have for 10 minutes at the beginning and the end of each meeting. If there's any members of the public that would like to speak now, I'd welcome you to do so. And I was also formed by GNAT. It's absolutely necessary that folks do get up to the microphone for GNATs, because these are publicized, so when folks speak from the audience, the sound won't pick up. So I do ask that we do a public comment, we don't bring it to the microphone. But I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and move on. Item three is to review the board goals. If everybody wants to just take a minute to review our board goals, they're in the agenda packet. For those new at the tables, a reminder, we just kind of go through this to kind of keep our heads set on.
Sorry.
Why we're here. Good. On to number four. I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
I move the consent agenda as it now exists.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion passes.
Aye.
Thank you, and we will.
I move the acceptance of the minutes as a placeholder.
Second.
Jim, any discussion? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I won't belabor this, but a couple of things. One is that when it gets down to item five, legislative and BSV updates, specifically 5D, what's in the final minutes is different than what was in the draft minutes. So if there was going to be a change between the draft and the final minutes, I think the board should be alerted to that, the rationale associated with it. Secondly, if you think back to the meeting that we had endorsed it on this particular item, I made a motion to amend the main motion that essentially said that if we delegate our authority to a group, such as, as we did, the chair, vice chair, clerk, and superintendent to advocate in reference to legislation at the State House specifically on the transformative bill that's up there, that we should prioritize cost containment and make sure that whatever is done represents an effective and efficient governance system. And that essence of that isn't really articulated, I don't think, in the body of this. And that's fine, but, you know, it does mention costs, but cost containment is a separate concept from cost. So maybe if we put cost containment in there somewhere. But I think we need to stress the idea, we already had one proposal that many of our folks, meaning the administration, thought was unworkable from a governance perspective, that it was almost impossible. So I think we need to prioritize that, and I think we have to listen to the voters, especially from the last election, that they are looking for cost containment as well. And so I just think, I don't think I'm even going to make a motion to change these. But I just want to reinforce that idea and to make sure that we try to, try to get the essence of what was stated, especially if it was part of the motion. And it was part of the motion, it should be probably in the motion itself. So there's no question when we look back at it, and when others look at it from afar. But I'll just leave it at that.
Adding, I remember the motion that you made. I thought it was a really appropriate way of delegating authority with appropriate strictures. But that raises the whole issue of, if you go back and read these minutes six months from now, there, there isn't much information about what took place. And I'm not asking for 18 pages of minutes, but when there are substantive comments from either the public or, or motions like this that specifically entitle what I'll call a subgroup of the board to act, I think that needs to be spelled out. And I think that when there are salient comments, especially by the public, it's useful to record the essence of what is being said. And so I would beg leave to expand a little bit on the minutes, providing relevant and appropriate detail as, as part of our way of acknowledging the public, acknowledging what we did, and having a record that actually recalls what we did, so that it's not memory. But it also allows anybody who, since these are in the BRSU website, the Taconic Green website, people could go back and say, oh, yeah, that comment was made, that observation was made, and it was, it was important enough to be included in the minutes. Again, I'm not asking for a revision, but when we went back to review something in the, earlier in the policies, the minutes didn't help us much, but some of our notes did. So I do remember a lot of what's said, but we shouldn't depend on somebody's memory, which always is fallible.
Lindsay?
Just to expand on that, there's, I made a comment maybe a year or two ago about how our minutes were not detailed at all, about how we would say discussion held, and then that was it. And so I don't think it should just be of substance, but it should be at least everything, if a discussion is held, at least bullet points or something, so that, like you said, we can go back and remember what was had. So I don't, I just wanted to expand on it, that I don't think it should just be, you know, a substantive discussion, but.
I would view that as substantive.
Good. Any other comments specifically on that before I comment?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I know I'm jumping in.
No, welcome to the table.
I'm not quite sure exactly what was said, but I'm gonna, I want to piggyback on what Lindsay said, and as like a member of the public, last year when I was trying to like read over your minutes, it's very difficult. And so I think, you know, if you're forced to watch the two hours of video, it's a little bit more challenging. Sorry.
No. David?
I feel like I need to weigh in a little bit. This, this format was adopted maybe 10, 12 years ago, and it was, because it's quite onerous to do the detailing, and you have to hire someone, and you spend, I mean, you do spend a lot of time on it. People started to say, well, you do have the GNAT, so you can watch that and get the details, and that this captures the essence, but if, if it's not adequate, then we can adjust back. But it's not a simple, it's not simple just flipping a switch, say, oh, we'll just do it a different way. It may require, it'll require talking to people and seeing if they're willing to do that, or if we have to get someone else to do it, or how it's going to work.
I will offer, I know that technology exists that would transcribe this noise digitally, and it would be immediate, and I don't know, I've not used it enough to know if I can pause it and look back at it.
You set the transcription, right, sorry.
Excuse me?
We've got the transcription on.
Actually, that's a really good idea.
We always do, we, we do, we just don't use them for minutes, but.
I think I'm, I'm hearing a good sense of, a good proportion of the board is going like, more information is better than less information anyway for the public, right? And we know that we do have GNAT to look at.
No, I think you're right, I think we should switch to trying to do a transcript that's not a detailed transcript, but an executive summary transcript. And that would just have the highlights, and would have the essence of the discussion points. So I think we should try that, that's a good idea.
Who would, who would do that?
I would, I would look into doing something digitally.
Sharon has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. John, would you like to add to that?
I'll do it.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just speak loudly.
Yeah, sorry, I'm up there, as I said, I'm on the tail end of COVID here. But we may want to look into, so it's not so laboring, AI tool that summarize transcripts. There's a lot out there for public meetings, like the website Golden Bell Vermont summarizes all committee meetings. It would take more attention on our part to make sure accurate, but it might be worth something, worth trying out to see if that truly captures the essence of our meetings with sufficient detail.
Does anybody want to volunteer to take on some research on that, or would you like this?
As the clerk, I feel like I should probably be responsible for that, so I don't know how to do it, but we'll figure it out. John, can you help?
Yeah, I know that there's free technology.
He's got time.
For, I think, there was a very specific concern about the minutes as they exist right now. Might I suggest that a motion is made to not pass the minutes, or to what table these minutes, until we can go back and look at GNAT and make sure we get the motion right? So at least when we do approve these minutes, that they are accurate.
We haven't yet adopted the technology, not.
GNAT, we could go back and re-watch it on GNAT and record it.
So.
You know, break down what it is to say.
I wonder if we could, since this is the format we've used, maybe approve them as they exist, but hope in the future to do a more, a more detailed executive summary using the tools that technology has given us.
But if they're not accurate, you can't approve it.
These are as accurate as they've ever been.
Jeff had a specific, this is Mel, who's referencing Jeff specifically.
Right, they're specifically missing something that, as you noted, we could go back in six months and we won't have that record.
Okay.
So if you think that record is important.
I do.
I'm happy to take a motion.
So I withdraw my motion.
The one to approve it?
Yes.
Would you like to amend it? Okay. So then we will, are you, would you like to table the motion?
No, I want to withdraw it.
Right.
And if I withdraw it, that means it has to go to the next meeting.
Okay.
At which point we may have corrected the objections and also provided a little bit more detail.
Can you withdraw?
Okay. So as I understand it, we're going to move these meeting, these minutes to the next meeting to approve. Any other thoughts on that? Great, okay. Number five, approve policy committee minutes. Someone from the policy committee want to speak on that?
Well, as instructed by the board, we reviewed each policy and what the minutes effectively have done. There were five areas that we looked at, and several areas we made some changes. And the changes within the context of the minutes with respect to policy 3.1, 2.7, and, and the transportation policy, the changes that we have articulated are in italics. So we restated the policy, and, and the words that were added are that. We can go further, but I think there are motions in, and I would make them to approve, to, I never can figure this out. Either it's approve or adopt, and I think this meeting, we approve the changes, and the next meeting, we have another review.
Right now, we're just approving the minutes.
So there are, there are three of us here.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Jeff Wilson, first, our motion, and then Suzanne, second.
And since only three of us vote.
All in favor of approving minutes. Anybody abstaining? Anybody not? Any ayes? No, great.
Don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't, don't we have to now discuss approving each of the policy changes?
37.
That's coming later.
Right. Right, that'll be done around Dr. N. Popovich. So we're at number six, school reconfiguration. Responses opposed. Randy, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, so, so this next section is continuing the conversation around school reorganization within the district. So there are a number of items here, they, they are a little bit complicated, and I know that I've heard from a few people that taken out of context, there was some confusion, so we'll try to walk through them in an organized way. So the first, the first section of this is responding to proposals made by community members. So at the last meeting, the board discussed that if a proposal comes, at least for now, that, that the agenda planning committee, the board chair, I mean, the, the chair, vice chair, clerk, and I would review, discuss, and then come to the board of the recommendations. So these first two items are in response to two proposals we had. The first one was to, for the board to consider constructing a new elementary school instead of a new middle school. And so you can see what's in here as the recommendation, and the recommendation to continue moving forward. So the, the proposal by the community members, and then the recommendation for you to discuss is to continue moving forward with new construction of a middle school instead of an elementary school, which is where, where kind of all of our work began. The two primary drivers of that decision are really the physical layout and construction of a middle school. When you, when you're looking at a middle school model and you're, you have houses or teams, there's a lot that we've learned about, about the, the learning environment that facilitates kind of their academic, developmental, social, emotional needs. And, and the buildings that we have currently in our system are not designed for, for accomplishing those. The cost, so, and, and elementary programming is much more easily provided within the buildings that we currently have. In talking to the architects, we did not get into details about numbers, but they were, they were confident that the cost to construct a new elementary school would be higher than the cost to construct a new middle school. And to accomplish the goals of the middle school, to renovate any building, but if we focus on the current Manchester building, the cost to renovate, that would also be higher. So from a cost perspective and from an educational perspective, the recommendation is to continue moving forward, new construction, in whatever format you decide as a board, whether that's a new building or an addition that it is for the middle school. So that's, that's the first topic for discussion.
Jeff?
This is a recommendation from you and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we met and discussed these.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, yep.
But, one point I don't think you covered, but I thought was kind of a important point as well, is the fact that the elementary school's going to be a larger building.
Correct.
Than, than the middle school, therefore, constructing a brand new elementary school would probably, you know, you'd end up probably spending more on the middle and the elementary than.
Correct. Both costs would be higher.
And that is because of class sizes, being smaller in elementary than middle school, or not?
It is because of the number of students.
Right.
And the, the kind of construction, the way that you design the buildings. They're more efficient when you have teams together versus classrooms. There's typical structure of like corridors with, with classrooms.
Right.
That are more individual in nature, like.
That's elementary.
That's elementary, right, versus the footprint for a middle school that is more fluid and smaller footprint.
Lindsay?
Just a question, you said it would be more students in the elementary school? But don't those students, oh, because I guess there's more classes, classes, okay, that's where I was getting a little confused.
There's more grade levels, yeah, more students.
Okay. I just, I'm thinking in my head, like when I went to middle school, the middle school building is a lot bigger than my elementary school, so I'm trying to understand how.
How many middle, how many elementary students are in that middle school?
Three.
Right.
Yeah, I guess in my head, I just feel like a middle school, big, bigger building. So when I read that, I was kind of, wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's not.
That was accurate.
I would point out that the research that the group got together and, and did, and the presentation really caused us, in the group that considered all of the details, to, to really consider that as a really viable alternative proposal. Some of the logic that was articulated almost suggests we should be doing both, building a new middle school and building a new elementary school to really bring ourselves up to the best building structures for the best possible modern education that occurs. But when we really looked at it, the reasons cited can be gone into with greater detail. But on balance, I, as a part of that group, and the others who were there, really bought the logic as we examine further details. I absolutely applaud and will applaud any parent group or any group that really takes a hard look at, at options that we really ought to review. And in this particular case, the better option is to focus on a middle school.
Randy, can I ask, you have part one and two here for this response. Are you looking for a motion to accept the recommendation here?
So this is, so yeah, that's a great point, I was thinking about that in the middle of the discussion. Really, the way that I see it is, these are two recommendations that came, and the board asked chair, vice chair, clerk, and me to review and present information to you. We did not discuss a process after that. My thought that I would encourage you to just think about, if you want, if this makes sense to you, is that if, after discussing these, it feels like somebody is interested in moving forward with the board, adding this for consideration, adding, like, in this case, it's not recommended to move forward with this. it's not recommended to move forward with this, but maybe there's somebody who thinks that despite everything, they still think that we should be moving forward with considering it, then you would make a motion to do that for one or both of these. We're providing, right, the folks, the four people that looked at it are making a recommendation. The Board's discussing it. Your next decision would be whether or not you, as a Board, want to move forward with adding another option for consideration or not. That's how I see it. It doesn't mean you have to do anything, but you might, that.
We don't need to accept your recommendation necessarily, but if we want to move
Correct.
in a different direction, we would need to make a motion.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Because at this point, you've got information, you had something, we gave you a response, and then if there's anything further to do on it, then you would vote on that.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I just think it might be helpful because I brought the presentations of all the different models before. So as far as number of students, because we had looked at two different options, having, you know, middle school be grades six to eight or five to eight. And in the, just for numbers, if it were six to eight, that's 287 kids. Five to eight would be 391. But, you know, even in the five to eight, 391 middle school, 462 elementary students. So if we did it as a six to eight, it'd be 287 in the middle school and 568 in the elementary. So the numbers are.
There, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just about process again, about eliminating or approving recommendations. I was just looking back at the minutes from our last meeting. And it says on the whole issue of school reconfiguration for discussion, it says motion to not eliminate options or make final decisions until public input provided. What type of public input were we thinking about at that?
There was a detailed, fairly detailed presentation by the parent group on the first proposal. And we reviewed all the elements of that proposal with the architects and educationally and concluded that despite the passionate presentation, this really is not a viable option.
No, I understand that. I got that. I'm just saying.
So the public input.
So I don't think for these that that requires the public input, but that was my understanding of that particular motion. But the removal of anything from the arc, yes. And I made, we're not there yet, but I made a recommendation to consider that. But we have not had, there hasn't been community forums.
So the ones that we put forward with the letters and numbers.
Yes.
That's what's being referenced, okay.
Correct. That was my understanding.
John Wilson, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think I made the motion the last meeting that Randy along with Belle and Dick, they would only adopt new, we believe it's not to adopt new proposals made and go through them. Nothing of taking them off. So I just want to make sure, is that correct? Or is that up to you three to decide on the, to vet the proposals?
Right, which is what we did. And so that's what we're talking about now. And that, now the, I think the discussion is processed with, you know, the recommendations have come. So how does the Board respond? But I don't think, I wasn't understanding that these would be part of that other motion.
Yeah, no, that's good clarification.
I had a follow-up question just kind of, or I.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Question to the number two, can I ask that now?
Why don't we get, wait till we get to number two, if it's specifically about number two?
Oh, we're still.
Right, we're still number one. Jeff, you raised an interesting point. I was, I thought, and I'll have to go back and look, that the intent of going to the public was if we were specifically going to close a school or, you know, choose one of those options. Not necessarily just take one of them off the table, but you might be right. So thank you for bringing it up because I was.
No, no, I was just curious what everybody's understanding was on that.
Any further discussion on item one? No. Randy, would you like to speak to the second item?
Okay, so the second, number two, was again, somebody from the public provided a proposal. And I just kind of gave a general summary of what was included in that proposal and in the packet. And you can see that this is a proposal about moving students, maintaining the current schools and moving students around. And the concern with this recommendation is really as you look ahead for what we want as far as educational experiences and opportunities in the future for our students, the current buildings don't really align with where we wanted to go as a community. So it, I think that there's, you'll see later on, there's discussions around sort of a transition process. And I think that this idea has potentially some, it aligns in some ways to some, a transition, if that's what we decide we want to do as a system. But I don't think that long-term, it accomplishes the goals and the vision that we had set out for what we wanted for our kids.
John, do you want to ask your question now? Any other questions or comments about that? No? Are any proposals around that? Motions you need? Randy, could you take us to discussion on the transportation update?
Sure. So I think it was at the last meeting, there was questions, there were questions brought by the Board just for a little bit additional information on transportation, since the proposal and the information that was provided was from the first bus stop to school, right? And there was discussion around the fact that actually sometimes kids are having to drive to schools, sometimes for distances. So I asked our transportation folks to take our outlying students, the kids that, you know, like live in more sparsely populated areas, looking at addresses that are farthest from routes. And the feedback they gave is about 10 minutes or so. There might be a couple more minutes, but that was information they gave. I did not have them run every single address. I said, you know, look up at Danby, look at Mount Tabor, look at Weston, Peru, Land Grove, places that we knew. And so that was the information, so I wanted to share that. Our buses for our students are full. So the, when we were talking last time and I talked about some of the buses being less filled, those are for our secondary students. So our transportation for our schools are full buses. So there's 60 students, there's one bus that is in Manchester that has closer to 70 students. We're actually exploring how we might divide that up a little bit as we look ahead to next year. But they're full. So that was just in response to that conversation.
Questions, comments?
With respect to transportation, I understand the hour, but by the vagaries of chance, I drove to several appointments this past week and each appointment happened to be an hour and seven minutes away. So I got to experience while I was driving, I couldn't zone out. But it does, it really does create a little bit of fatigue. And so for that kid who is driving 10 minutes to the first stop, it's a burden in my view. I was tired after three days of that, and if it happens all winter long. And I could easily see that that would induce a bit of fatigue. So I'm suggesting that we design hub routes that move kids from a hub much more quickly to school. And I know that this is the way a lot of bus systems work in rural communities. And it would be good because then although it poses more difficulty for parents, it nonetheless reduces the time on the bus from the furthest hub, I think. And it would be a little easier to manage.
What is the longest acceptable time that we have now? Is it an hour or what's the?
Our longest routes are about an hour.
And if you add the extra commute and it's an hour and 10 minutes for the person that's farthest away and has to drive 10 minutes?
Correct.
So do we think that's agreeable, acceptable? And how many of our kids, is that like 5% of our kids or 20% of our kids?
I don't have that number, but I'm happy to look into it.
Can anybody recall if we have a policy? I don't think we do. I don't think that we have written it.
Might as be, might as be, it's something acceptable from an hour to 70 minutes or something like that that was brought up in the last.
That's been discussed recently, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not.
Right.
Well, I just, I'd bring us to, like, in part of us adopting policy governance is pulling back from the micromanaging things like bus routes. So like, and we have our transportation policy for review. So I would just suggest we look at that a little bit closely. There's some good recommendations that were made, but I think there may be others that we can consider or at least recognize that we're giving, authorizing Randy to make some of these decisions so that we don't get into the weeds.
I wasn't intending for it to be the weeds.
No, I agree. I agree.
Personally experienced it and would make a recommendation that we try and keep the routes as fast as possible.
Might suggest they'd probably do that already.
Just drive faster.
No, we're not driving faster.
There's a governor on the buses, you can't go.
Any further comments or statements, questions about transportation?
Yes, I'd like to unpack a little bit of what Ben just said because if you do turn to the policy, it does list all these things that we've talked about. But it doesn't, it says you need to be worried about those, but it doesn't give you parameters. So is that when we slip into being procedural? If we said that the distance be traveled shouldn't be more or, actually, it should be time of travel. Shouldn't be more than a certain, then that's becoming, but isn't that something we should be providing guidelines on?
David, could I suggest we wait for this discussion for when it's on our agenda to approve or revise transportation policies? So once we get there, let's dive into those weeds and just to get through this section. After transportation, we have regular looking for an action for recommendation to remove options H and H1 from consideration. Could you speak to that?
Yes. So, and this goes, I think, back to what Jeff said because we did talk about not sort of moving forward with ideas or taking things off the table until we had community engagement on it. So you may not want to approve this, but I felt like it was important to put this forward for the Board to discuss. So, you know, these are really challenging and hard discussions. And in considering sort of the footprint of our system, the communities that our schools serve and the regions around our communities, I felt like it was important for the Board to consider the idea that maybe we want to take the idea of closing Floodbrook off the table right now. I think that there, you know, we, there's definitely a chance that there could be students from other schools that, smaller schools, that are able to enroll their kids at Floodbrook. It, well, you know, on a great day, it can take me 15 minutes to get from Manchester to the school. Frankly, there's not a lot of great days weather-wise that we have. So, and we know that the weather is often very different. And the idea of, you know, transporting some of those kids down, just, it's a little bit hard to swallow right now, given where we are. So I think that I'd like the Board to consider, you know, at least a discussion to consider keeping it open and reserving the right, as we should, I think, all the time, of what does the future hold? And if there's either a significant decline of enrollment, that we realize there's a real impact on the education quality that we're able to provide. Or if there's new legislation that also makes it clear that there's jeopardy to what would happen to the kids in that school, that we obviously, if those, either of those happen or something else that isn't even on here happens, we reassess. But I think it's really worth discussing keeping it open.
Jeff?
Raised my hand more tonight than last year. But anyway. So again, process, Aiden.
Yeah.
We have various recommendations that are still on the table. And at some point, a recommendation, a final recommendation will be made. And the other ones fall away sort of automatically. But that's all based at some point on some public discussion. Well, the public discussion happens prior to that final decision being made. But you obviously make those recommendations. So where are we in the process of making recommendations? Are these, is this your recommendation?
That's mine.
Right. And so you're making, this is one, and you may have others coming forward. So where are we on a timeline about actually coming to a landing on the final one?
So I would say to the Board that you hold a couple of community forums over the next month and give people a chance to look at these ideas. When we think about timeline of moving this work forward, we've got to start making some decisions and moving if we want to have a bond vote next March. If you're not, if you're not, if you don't want to move that quickly, then we can talk about a timeline. But if I backward chain this, if we say March of 26 is when we want to have a bond vote, go to the voters, I would recommend that for school closure process, we know that there needs to be a non-binding vote for the communities that we are proposing closing schools. My recommendation would be that that happens in November. I'll write all this down for the June meeting. But November, because it's a time when people will go to the polls. That also, that allows there to be a vote of the, by the Board in November and for us to budget for FY '27 based on what's going to happen and prepare for that March vote. So the timing of that part of the process is, that makes sense to me. That means that in October, we need to have the meetings in the communities. So if we're going to do all of that, we're going to want to be moving forward so that we can get all the work done prior to the fall to be prepping for March.
Randy, I just want to just quick ask you. I feel like a lot of this timeline stuff is kind of in the next section of your, what you're going to talk about. Is that right?
Some of it is, yeah. Some of the details, I think I just said, I don't think are in there yet.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we want to bring it back to just discussing specifically.
Yep.
H1 first and then go back. Do you have a comment on the timeline or on the proposal?
On the proposal that we're just talking about.
Great.
And one of the things that the architect. And one of the things that the architects asked us to do was begin to explore options. And we added option A, although it wasn't specifically recommended. We focused on B and H and chose the one in each case. It seems to me that part of the reason why we added A was that there were some serious issues related to transportation, travel, winter weather, related to H, which assumes that Floodbrook is going to close. I think that our superintendent has really reviewed whether or not Floodbrook closing is a really viable option. And when you begin to look at the complexity, H1 says it's five, six, seven, and eight. We had some questions because five wasn't really explored educationally, but Randy said, I can make it work. So I think eliminating H pulls out the, the general idea of closing Floodbrook, which will be under the state guidelines in Act 454, going to be too small a school if all of that goes forward. But making a decision to keep Floodbrook open for solid educational and other reasons means effectively H is not really a viable option if you're not going to close Floodbrook. So removing that and committing to holding Floodbrook open then puts in play option A and option B. And you really don't need H.
Can, can, just to interrupt for a second.
I'm done.
It'd be helpful, I think, for the public to maybe get a better idea of what H really is. I mean, we're referring to H and H1.
Yeah.
But could you just explain what it is to folks?
Well, it, it, it centers around closing Floodbrook School. Or, and, yeah, so that's really the big, for elementary programming. So I'm recommending that it stays open for the students up on the mountain or through interdisciplinary.
But H is more than closing Floodbrook.
Yes.
Closing all schools.
Except the mountains.
Right. H is, H is moving all schools to Manchester. Two schools to Manchester.
Right.
Sorry, yes, sorry, sorry, you're right.
Those are the only ones that are specific that include the closure of Floodbrook.
Right. I just wanted...
Yes, thank you.
John has had his hand up for a minute online. John, go ahead.
So I, everybody, he says Dick, and I, I understand, I'm in agreement. The, you know, what we did say, we want public comment. What I'm wondering about is how would, if we remove H1 or H from the table, how would that directly work with the architects now? Like, I don't see any serious support for that H option right now. Maybe there is. It makes sense to me right now, but maybe I'm a blind spot. Maybe there's public input that's worth hearing. But I also don't want to leave it on the table that the architects are going to, you know, the architects, we have our contract that we're paying, and they're going to be spending time and resources focusing on H when it's really, you know, currently don't against viable option. So I guess, what's the, what's the work plan as architects? Are we, if we leave it on the table, are we going to waste money, resource, daytime resources, model it out?
Yes, that's a great question. And yes, right? The more modeling we do, the more we ask of them, the more it's going to cost. And so they're waiting for us, they're trying to move forward, they're ready, they've done a lot of thinking and concept design, they're working on the MEMS, you know, the layout and the plot of the Manchester property right now. But I, I agree, I don't, I don't want us to expend financial resources and human capital on work that is not something that we would move forward with. And I, I guess that the question is, you know, do we, do we figure out a way to collect some information from people around this or, or hold off another month and kind of keep everybody at hold until, so we can do some community events to get input? I could say there's been some communication about people not wanting it to close, but I don't know how representative that is.
Can I, I'm going to just throw out there, we could always make a recommendation to only move forward with such, the other recommendations without actually removing it, I would think. But Ben's going to stand up, and then Lindsay, and then I'll come down.
Yeah, I was going to essentially make that recommendation. Even you, this is, is put out here as an action item, and I would, I don't have the exact words of a motion in my head, but essentially the motion to be to, to pause further action on, by the architects and planners on H and H1 until such time as we have further public input and clarity from the board as to whether we want to move forward or not. So essentially pause it and then seek some public input, come back at the next meeting and vote whether we want to completely remove it from consideration or keep it. Because it does feel like there has been, there has been quite a bit of public input saying that people don't like this, but if we say we're going to consider getting rid of it, maybe we'll get some different responses from, from other folks, so.
That sounds like a good motion to me, and I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, Lindsay, you had your hand up. Let's move forward and flow right into discussion on that motion.
Oh, I, because that was kind of my thought process, but I guess my other question would be, say we did at some point remove an option, are we allowed to bring it back again eventually? Like, say like today we, we removed H, and then a few months down the line, we actually liked H. Once we remove an option, is it no longer on the table?
The motion is a pause.
That's not, I was asking, my hand was raised before you made the motion. So let me ask my question.
Okay. Sorry.
So can, if we were to have removed an option, are we down by, are we able to add that?
Yeah, I think it ultimately depends on how far down the line you are as board, because there will be a point at which they are, we are developing the real detailed concept design and architectural design for a plan, and there'll be a point where you're not going to go back. But this is not that moment.
Yeah, no.
So, and, but I, I think anything can be discussed up until the point at which it can't.
Because I'm just curious, say we do get further down and the architect sees something that's like, we run into where it's like, you know what, H actually would work the best with that?
Right.
Because we removed it, are we not able to bring it back on the table?
Right. No, I wouldn't. I mean, it's up to you to say that, but from, from an operational perspective, there's a window where you can do that for sure with the architects, and you would, as a board, understand what the parameters were whenever that time happened. And I, I think that, you know, the, 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 the H454 bill was just, we're going to talk about this, I'm not going to go into detail, but just voted out of the Senate on Friday. The current version that was moved out strips class size and school size. We don't know what's going to happen in Senate Finance, we don't know what's going to happen in the committee, but we'll know a lot more by the June meeting. So to your point, if somehow it comes back and it, whatever it is, it presents us with a very different scenario moving forward, then it may be that we put it back on the table because what we're facing indicates we should.
And essentially, until we go to bond vote, anything, it's just more expensive if we keep going back and forth.
Correct, right, right, right. Yes, that's true. And the timeline could shift radically, right? We want to make the right decision, we don't want to be, make a rushed decision. So I think there's always going to be some level of flexibility.
All right, I think go ahead, David, up and then Jeff.
Yes, I, I was going to just say that I'm glad we're discussing Randy's recommendation and not deferring for public support. I agree that, that we need the public to understand where we're going, but the responsibility for these decisions relies with the board. And the board needs to think these things through, and that's our responsibility. And then we need to explain, if people have questions, walk them through the same journey, and it may be a Reader's Digest condensed version, but it's our responsibility to do it and to get it right. And I feel strongly that we don't, that Floodbrook does need to stay open because of the commuting times and the manageable transportation and the community issues. If we break, I, I don't think we're ready to regionalize the middle, the elementary school yet. Maybe someday in five or 10 years. But I think right now, regionalizing the middle school and then finding appropriate locations for two elementary schools is a really good idea.
Thank you. Jeff?
David, I don't disagree with you, but, but, and I thought, I thought Ben's motion is really good in many respects, but I don't know if I can agree with it. The problem, the only problem I have here is the problem that is in the minutes from our last meeting, which says, motion to not eliminate options or make final decisions until public input is provided. It's sort of disingenuous of us to say, well, we're going to put this one on the back burner, you know, and, and try to wiggle our way around it using semantics, because we are essentially being, we're being close to eliminating it. But in any event, I think we'd be better off, maybe trying to amend the language of this condition and possibly saying, motion to not make any final decisions until public input is provided, and leave what is taken up when up to Randy. Does that make any sense? Does that, I understand the dilemma I'm in here because of what is stated in, we, commitment that we essentially made on this?
Very Herbiean.
Herb's not here, he asked me to take up his...
So I, I think, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, I, I agree, and I hear you 100%. I, I actually feel the same way, even though I wrote this, and still feel like it's an important discussion. But maybe it is the board acknowledging, you know what, you know, whether in general at this point, you're supportive of this idea or not, and saying we're not, you know, we can pause, there's nothing that says the architects have to do any work on this over the next month. The board, and I don't know, I'm, I'm making assumptions here, but based on some of the nonverbal language and comments I've heard, so I may be wrong, but it sounds like the board is, in general, possibly supportive of the idea of keeping Floodbrook open, but the board's not going to make any decisions after public comment, which is what they said they would do. And that way you're able to signal, in general, where your thinking is as a board right now, but not making any decisions until you've heard from the public. And that will happen when, I, I don't know, I feel like this should be sort of, this sounds like community engagement committee work, but you might just tell me to just schedule some meetings. So either way, I think it should happen in the next month.
Jeff, where, where are you finding that language? I'm typing all over and I can't find it.
Yeah, it's on page 4A.
Very top, page four.
4A, 2A. Page 4A.
Item 2A.
2A item, yeah.
For, for this agenda?
No.
No, it's the minutes from last meeting.
Minutes left.
Page, packet page four.
Um, yeah, I am. I'm on the minutes from packet page four, and I'm not seeing that as a motion.
2A, it's the very top of the page. It's like...
What meeting? April 1st?
Yeah.
Why am I, okay, I'll just keep it in the series. Clearly looking at a different...
The first one, the April 3rd, second page.
On my PDA, it's completely different than this. I don't know why. Oh, from item 6.
Yeah.
That's why.
Oh, yeah.
2A of item 6, that's right.
It's right, yeah, it's right.
Okay, thank you. I'm driving crazy.
Mel? Um, so, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Do we need to, then, and please correct me again, but do we need to, as a board, then, like, I don't know how the wording is, but schedule our community engagement committee to then figure out when we're going to do these forums to get the feedback?
So we could approach this two ways. One, as Randy said, we can just ask Randy to start scheduling for them, or we could, as a board, ask community engagement committee to come up with a format forum and timeline of which they'd like to do it. It seems, it might be more efficient to go straight to review, but that's, that is a part of the side. Ben?
I just, you know, again, this is, I fully, I'm in support of the, the sort of idea of this process of not to eliminate options and make final decisions until public input is provided, that was the language. But I do think that this proposal is not very radical, and, and like, we're going to need to have some really big public engagement meetings that look at the complexities of the proposals that we're really going to dig into. And so I just think, just thinking about expediency and our, our time and the public's engagement with this, like, thinking through however, whatever the public, I mean, it really, to my mind, this could be, we put out a press statement that says, you know, like, these are the current, like, because we've had, we had, we've had a series of meetings, and we went through all the, the options, and we made selections, and there's opportunity for public to give input on that already at this point. And so just thinking, you know, again, maybe this is a community engagement group sits and thinks about this, but I don't know that this is the moment to have a whole series of public forums. I think the moment for that is going to be when we have more detailed proposals to look at coming down the line. Again, it may be that there's, I'm totally misreading the room, and I live on the mountain, so the feedback I've been getting is really clearly, don't you dare do this. But, you know, again, just thinking about how, what's the best way that we approach this?
Rogan, you haven't spoken yet.
There, there were several people who voiced objection at that meeting, and in some of the letters that we've gotten, what is, how much public engagement do we need just to pause these?
Maybe we could decide to vote on the motion, and if the motion passes, that we want to eliminate it, we can. And if it does not pass, we're signaling to Randy that we've like heard, and we can talk about discussing having a public...
The word was pause.
The word is pause.
Correct. The word in the motion is pause. So I'm not sure we're going to get it much further with this, because we're, we're going kind of back and forth now on this.
Let me try one last thing.
Sure.
I promise, sort of. But I agree, I agree with Ben that we shouldn't have little hearings on every little piece of this. I would see one public forum at the end where we have the ultimate proposal, and we say, why the ultimate proposal, the way we're going, and why we're not going with H1, H whatever, you know? And I would see that as the approach to take. And maybe this process isn't even our process at this point, it's really Randy's process. So maybe we shouldn't be doing anything about eliminating anything. And if she thinks that there's a good reason to pause H and H1, that she can do it on her own, and when she's ready to bring, which, I'll ask again, when do you think you'll be ready to bring a final decision to the board, we can sort of wrap this whole thing up in one fell swoop, so to speak, he said optimistically.
No, I think we can.
Can I, I maybe like some clarification on that. Are you suggesting then, that as Randy comes to us and say that she's going to recommend to the architects that we no longer consider in keeping Sunderland or Courier open, and we're going to move forward with the building that includes those being closed? That we won't have individual meetings with those towns anymore, and we'll only have one final public engagement that includes these very specific...
That's my thought, but I'm open to, you know, doing something different. But it's sort of one end game, whether it be a couple of meetings here or there, or one meeting, you know? But I don't think we should have intra-meetings throughout at this stage. We have our public discussion happening in a public forum, meeting like it is tonight. But I would wait till Randy comes with the, sort of the final offer on this and have the board discuss it, and then we go forward at that point. Does that make sense to you, Randy?
It makes sense. I don't love the idea.
I know you don't. I know you don't.
But it makes sense to me.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Wouldn't that kind of be, maybe the board should bring it to the community engagement committee, and we can kind of make those, make a decision and bring it to you guys about what we think? about what we think?
Yeah.
Because I do think if you're going to close a school, you should have a forum with that community.
Okay.
But I don't know, you know, I feel like that should be maybe something that the community engagement.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
So there's a couple of processes, right? And I think it's important to not co-mingle them, for lack of a better word. Ultimately, if we're going to close schools, we have to follow the Articles of Agreement we have for the district, which will require the community meetings, the non-binding vote, the vote of the board at 75%. All of that has to happen according to your Articles of Agreement. Right now, you know, I think that Jeff's proposing something, I'm going to say it this way, Jeff's proposing something to you around process. He's saying, hey, maybe the superintendent should be continuing to review this and come to us with the final proposal when she's ready, when she feels like she's got it, which is fine. I will, I will do that, and I can do that. But I think that if the board wants a process that, you know, if you have an idea of how you want this process to work, then we should talk about that, because, because there's definitely, you know, I like the idea of us working together on this, and I also understand under policy governance, it's, it's, there's a clear argument that it should be me bringing something to you, so.
Go ahead, Nick.
I feel very strongly that the superintendent needs board-level support. If there was a major group of us that wanted H to stay on the table, but this particular set of proposals, if it's going to be eliminated, eliminates, at least in the short run, the option of closing Floodbrook. It immediately plays into the other two options, A and B. It also effectively changes the fifth grade and where they're likely to go and when. So it is a fundamental decision that I think the board should ratify. It can always come back, because the issue is pause. Close down the architects considering it, and the circumstance means that we do need to have schools over 400, then the fifth grade does need to come back, and the elementary schools and all of the rest of it plays into it. But this is a point where we were asked to come up with three suggestions out of the 11 that were reviewed by the various committees. And we chose three, each one of with slightly different problems. To eliminate the closing of Floodbrook is a huge board-level decision, because it means Floodbrook and the mountain towns have a school, and it changes the dynamic about what's going to happen in terms of the unification of elementary schools, the unification, exactly who is going to attend in a transition, the unified middle school. So I think this is a moment where we either ratify or say, "Keep it open." It's my view.
I'd like to call, vote on the motion that's on the table. Ben put out a motion to pause for the input from the architect, so we can meet with the public and hear from the public before we decide to take this off the table. If we vote in favor of this, I think that makes a clear message that we're taking a policy stance. If we don't follow along with this, then we can discuss what are the procedure steps are after this kind of happens, okay? So all in favor of the motion?
I'm not clear.
Yes.
If we vote in favor, what are we, what are we approving?
We're voting that we, as a board, are asking Randy, we're approving Randy, to take H1 and H off the table.
Pause.
Pause, not, I'm sorry, not take it off the table. Pause the work from the architects while we plan for our community engagement to discuss with the community and hear from them before we officially decide to take it off the table.
But does that mean we don't continue work on other things?
No, it's just pausing on H1 and H. That's how I understand it. Is that the intent?
Yes, that's the intent.
Does the motion clear, everyone? Go ahead. All in favor of the motion made by Ben? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. All opposed?
One.
One? Jeff, sorry.
Sorry.
Any abstentions?
Cool.
No.
He wants to vote no.
So the motion carries. Randy, we've just voted to allow you to ask your text to pause.
Architect.
Anything else on that before we move on? Do we want to have a, you know, is there anything else we want to put in the procedure at the moment? No?
I still think we're going to need to have a community engagement committee meeting to discuss how we want to possibly vote on this, just because we have multiple options that Jeff said. We can't just wait till the end where you get the final decision, or should we get, not feedback all the way along, but like, a little bit of feedback, because ultimately we can be voting on the bonds of whatever it is that we're doing. And if we're not getting that feedback along, I can, I'm worried that we're going to get to that final moment, and all the work we're going to do is going to flop.
There's a huge amount of community engagement built into the process at a later point. So that, so that concern is definitely heard, and there's, that's part of why we need to keep moving this along, because that all is going to happen in the fall and over the winter, where we've got renderings, and we're doing site visits, and the public has, you know, we do sessions on the bond and what that tax, that influence on the tax rate is. And there's expansive and extensive community engagement to prepare people for understanding what they're actually voting on.
I just think, like, I hear what you're saying, but I just want to acknowledge that I think, like, going back, like, I think the reason why families proposed an elementary school instead of a middle school is because it was a surprise that, you know, we've been talking about this middle school for many years, right? And it was a surprise all of a sudden that now we're going to be closing elementary schools. And I think, so, you know, other thoughts, obviously, the community are coming up with now. And I just think we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, and I think that the question around, I think it's important for the board to decide if you want the community engagement committee to do the work for scheduling things or you want me to do it. If the community engagement committee is going to do that work, I'm going to request that they meet very quickly.
Can, what if we?
So just as we, as we continue the conversation, because I want to make sure that the work can happen really quickly.
What if I, go ahead.
Just as someone on the community engagement committee, I don't think we've ever really discussed what the parameters are of the scope of work for the community engagement committee. And just, you know, in listening to you, Randy Houston, you have like a very clear picture about the timeline of how that's all going to play out from, you know, October to the bond vote. And so, I, well, I think that's great, but the community engagement committee is going to need some direction on what the board is looking for for those types of things. Obviously, we've worked with Randy for that, but we just, we don't have a clear scope of work.
Well, I can. So why don't we, so why don't we pause for a second on that? Let's move to the timeline.
Well, it looks like it's.
Let's put the timeline with Randy.
It looks like it's not included, that it's not in the packet, so, right? It's not in my packet. So it didn't get included, so you're not going to have a chance to look at it.
You're right. I'm sorry I missed that. Yeah.
I would just draw our attention back to previous presentations by the architect that do go through the timeline and do lay out the time zone of community engagement.
Yes.
And that they are going to be instrumental.
Right.
Facilitating, structuring and facilitating that process. So this is not a board role.
Right.
And we will support that and be engaged with it, but really, the specific thing that we need to do in this moment, that committee needs to do, is figure out what's an appropriate level of reaching out to the community about H and H1 at this point. So, and, so yes, Jim's got a copy of that.
The timeline.
Timeline.
No, oh, yeah, from that. And there's, we keep updating it, and it's pretty current now.
So we, if we were to charge the board with making a decision, if we were to charge the community engagement committee, we're asking for more parameters around what they ask, but we don't really have a timeline to do that, so.
I'm recommending that a meeting happens in the next month. And I know that Jeff, but we are at, I mean, there's.
Well, that's what, so what I was going to say is, would the board prefer to have the community engagement committee meet and discuss this, or how does the board feel about having Randy schedule this first one, since you feel like it is absolutely, so that it is very timely, rather than lose time, get one on the books? And I guess that's a question for the board. Does it need to go through the community engagement to schedule this? Seems like an exercise.
I believe it does.
Okay, so, Jeff, would you? Yeah.
You know, personally, like, you know, we've got a, I think Suzanne had it right. I mean, we can't just ask the community engagement, okay.
You guys take it over.
I mean, you know, we, the board needs to understand, you know, what our timing is and what our process is, and at what point, you know, we need it. But, yeah, I think we, you know, it's fair to say, we could, it could be very useful to have input and community engagement all along the process, but like, right now, before we, before we kind of, you know, we need to be a little further down the road, I think, in our decision-making to know what, you know, we have to propose something to the community. We can propose several things, but we have to be clear on what we're proposing and what kind of input we're looking for. I just don't think we're quite there yet. I think, you know, it's, it's hard to make all the pieces fit together, but I think it's really important that we, you know, we, what we need to is plan for how we're, what plan we're trying to tell the community engagement committee to do.
Right, and I guess that's what I would ask. Is anybody ready to make a motion to clearly direct the community engagement on a direction right now? I see John's hand up. John, or I think I heard John stand up. No, okay.
Come back to me. It's not about community engagement.
Okay, Suzanne.
I just want to say also, you know, every time we do put together a large meeting, just saying, you know, what Jim's saying, we have to be really clear about what we put out in front of them, because it's very reactionary. And I just want to minimize that when we're making strong decisions, you know, like, so if we, if we, I don't, not that I want to say there's fewer engagements, but I just think that just make sure that structure is super clear, that people know why they're showing up, so that it doesn't become kind of what it was in the beginning. I think that would be more helpful to the board and to Randy.
I feel like we're, we're down to options A and B. There are many similarities, and there are some differences. And inviting the public to review and discuss in a very organized way, like at small group tables, to give input and feedback about which they consider better and more viable, I think, could be useful to me and to you. In my opinion, is actually that simple at this point. That then is information that you, as a board, can consider in June as we look at those options. And we don't meet in July, and I want to be able to keep moving things forward. So that's why I'm proposing. I do think it is simpler right now than, than we are aware. And I agree, Suzanne, that it, it needs to be well-organized and well-developed. Whether that, the activity or the way it's organized is done by the community engagement committee or by me, I don't think matters. I just don't want to waste time. And, and really with, I will just say that the community engagement committee has had some challenges with putting together plans and, and like, kind of executing. So I want to make sure that if the committee is, is meeting to plan, that it, you know, it is timely and efficient, so that we can, we can get it all going. Either way, it doesn't matter to me, but that's my request around kind of process.
Okay, I guess they, you know, I think it could be helpful for all of us to, to see the sort of, you know, the, if here the, the community outreach plan was really the starting step up.
And that's for that final review.
Okay.
Right? So this is, this is a dipstick for us, in our process, to collect some information from the public prior to making that final push, so the architects can do their work. So this is not included specifically on there as part of their work. It's, it's our process, because people talked about wanting input from people.
You know, something that could be very helpful is actually you, with the community engagement committee, just saying, you know, should it be at each town? We have a meeting? Should it, you know, should we do like we did last time, where we did each school, we have a session? So, I don't know how do we, we.
I feel like we need a motion to either engage the community engagement committee or to just give Randy the authority to go ahead and set it in motion.
I think a motion that would give Randy, authorize Randy to set the community engagement process in motion, maybe that she should. I'll just leave it at that.
Or you can write a song with whomever she likes.
Right. I'll take Suzanne's a second. Any discussion on that motion? All is in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Dick is abstaining.
John, John, I can't tell. He's.
I think he voted with.
He voted aye, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have another question.
I'm sorry, Mr. John. Do you want to go ahead and ask it before we move on?
It's not about, it's not about community engagement. It's about, so the timeline is not on the agenda, correct? So can I ask about, can I still ask about the timeline, or maybe what's not on the timeline? Can I, I thought you asked about that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You really can't, in the sense that I cannot.
Can I hold a model?
I can't do an effective job without looking at it and seeing it, and I apologize. I was in my peeler on Friday when it went out, and I did not see that it wasn't included, so I 100% own that, but.
Well, we all missed it, too.
I can. And I, yeah, I'm happy to send it to the board with a brief explanation, just so you can see what would have been in here. Obviously, we can't discuss it, but you can see what would have been here. But I really, it, yeah, I'm sorry, John, it just will be a mess, sort of, trying to verbally explain it.
Okay, Nick.
I see a big flag on it.
So then we can close this discussion out. We'll move on to the governance process of their action item to approve the revised personnel benefits.
I move that they be accepted as presented.
Second line.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the revised personnel benefits? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Passes. B, would like to, Dick, go ahead.
I move the acceptance of the draft behavior threat assessment team's policy.
One second.
Is this a mandated policy, Randy?
Yeah, can I make a comment about this?
I'll put it in.
Lindsay got the second?
Lindsay's second.
Can I make a comment for discussion?
Discussion.
So this is being, yeah, so you're going to see this in the legislative update. I was, what I said to Medowee last month was, I do not like this policy at all. I have advocated for it to be changed. I think it is poorly written. I think it contains a lot of procedure, and it was not changed. Right now, this is required to be adopted by boards by July 1st, something like that. So it, what?
They're working on it.
Yeah, so, so that meant it needed to come for approval at the May meeting and adoption at the June meeting. Now, as of recently, there's, clearly, I'm not the only person who doesn't like this, because there's a proposed bill to have this rewritten and extend the date for adoption to October 1st, I think. to October 1st, I think, so, to be honest, it is up to you about whether you approve it tonight or not. You can approve it, it is likely that something would be changed, and we do not have to move forward with adoption at the next meeting, but if you don't, then you will not be able to meet the statutory requirement for it to be adopted by July 1st, so it's up to you.
Just to kind of get, you know, color, this is, you know, one of the policies that the, right, the agency of education, and their obligation was to provide the policy by late 2023, they delivered it in February 2025, and everybody freaked out, so it is, it's almost certainly going to be changed, even though they had put in a July 1, 2025, you know, it used to be a playdate, and they go, you have full recognition that that is going to take back.
Yeah.
The FBA is working with A O E right now, because they work on lots of policies, and it's, it's, as Randy said, she's not the only person who said it was completely unworkable. So I'm a little hesitant for us to agree to something that's not as-
Right.
But if, if we approve it, then we haven't adopted it, and we're still in the framework, unless they change the dates, and if they change the dates-
They're going to change the document.
The whole document's going to change, and therefore, you have to begin, I think, the whole process again.
Right.
So we don't have to approve this, unless they neglect to change it by July 1st.
Well, I think by then, we're going to have to change the rules.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm fine with tabling it if you are as a board, I mean, my, I'm comfortable with that as superintendent, because it's a mess.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we have a motion on the table at the moment.
No, it hasn't.
Do we want to go ahead and, yes, it has, Lindsay's second, we did. Do we want to go ahead and vote on it, or would, yeah?
I just, I mean, I, I'm happy to vote and vote it down. I, I do want to just, for the, I think there are a lot of reasons not to love this policy, but one of the things that I think is like, in this particular moment, when we're trying to address cost containment issues, and what's going on with the rising costs in schools and things that are out of our control, this is a prime example. This is going to be really expensive, and there's no funding for it.
Right.
So it's just, it's one of those pieces that I think is worth stating to the public for the record, that there's, like, this is, there are real issues with this.
Right.
We're, we're really trying to struggle with that in our communities, and how we pay for schools and keep our small schools manageable and affordable, and then this gets put on top of it, and at the same time, we're being told to do the, you know, major school reconfiguration, so it's, I just, I just need to express that for the record.
Got you, that's good.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
What?
Can we withdraw the proposal?
We'll just vote it down.
No, vote it down.
Why does the table the motion?
I'd like to vote on the motion, and then if we vote it down, we vote it down.
We could totally table the motion, too.
If someone wants to call it out.
Well, I agree, but that isn't the procedure that you-
We table it.
The procedure is to withdraw it, and then a new proposal to table it, I believe.
Would you like to withdraw the-
I'd like to withdraw it.
Lindsay, would you like to, do you second me that?
Sure.
Great, so the proposal is withdrawn, we have another motion on the table.
I move to table this.
Great, Dick moves to table, does anyone want to second that? Nope, now it's Ben. Ben is moving to second, the tabling of the motion, all in favor of tabling this, this approval. Any, John is voting in favor, any opposed? New sentence, great, we were tabling, number C, approve revised transportation policy, can I get a motion on the table?
Tell me some motion.
Yes. Kelsey's motioning, can I get a second, please?
Second.
I got Dick on that first. And discussion, I think, David, you had wanted to, you had some points earlier, do you want to go ahead and bring those up now?
Well, it, it's not very specific, it talks about very, you know, real generalities about, you have to pay attention to all this stuff, and we know that we have to pay attention to the safety and the age and health of the pupils and the condition of the road and all that stuff, but it doesn't say, you know, the, the commute time shouldn't be any more than 45 minutes for kids from K through 5, and shouldn't be any more than such and such for high school, it doesn't, so is that a procedural issue?
We believe that it was a procedural.
We do have a procedure, I, I would be concerned about establishing numbers like that in policy, given the many, many exceptions and, and factors that go into that. I think we can include language in a procedure, but it's really, really tough to work within those types of parameters, especially given the geographical landscape that we have here.
Further discussion?
It is particularly important that the idea of an adult being present at the drop off for K to 4 be included in the policy. It gives the superintendent and the driver the ability to not just drop a child off, but rather, in terms of procedure, go to the next level of where that child should be dropped off.
And that, that's not a change in practice, that is how we have operated for the 12 years that I've been here, but it is helpful to have that in policy when parents think it's okay for their seven-year-old to walk a long distance without knowing if an adult is at home to receive them, so, that's, we appreciate it being included.
Ben, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I guess the, I was, I had jotted some notes about this, and then I was realizing that, so in, in this section, it's, the middle section, accordingly, district has decided, has decided to furnish transportation under this policy to do these things, the decision to provide transportation or establish contracts will consider student enrollment. That is obviously not the only thing that will be considered, right? So I just didn't know if that's, so, and, because I started to question, what about all these other things? But I, I don't think we need to enumerate that, or we shouldn't enumerate those other things, because this is at the policy level, am I correct in that?
Correct.
That's how we're reading this?
And I'm happy to share the procedure with you, just so you've got that as well. We just added an update to that as well, so that might also help as the companion, so that you have some more details about how we operate.
And again, like, I don't want to, you know, as I sort of found myself, I was like, okay, there's like, I, the, the, the question of providing transportation to Burn Burton and other schools, the thing that stuck in my head was, should we be prioritizing, should we make a statement in here that says we prioritize providing busing services to our, to our school, to our operating schools over, over choice schools? Because right now, we have schools that are, don't have bus routes, because we don't have drivers, but we're providing transportation to, are we, I don't, I don't know what the status is, if we're providing outside of Burn Burton, if we're providing transportation to long trail or not, or facilitating that.
I don't-
We don't.
Okay.
But we do, I think, bring kids to, when they're already on the bus coming to town, where a long trail bus picks them up.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I just, that was the, the thing that was in my head, was just, is there, is there a mechanism for us to say in this that we prioritize busing of our, providing busing services to our students in our operating schools over non-operating? So that was just, I don't know if that needs to be put in here, if that's just something that is a, an aside recommendation to you in your developing procedure. And that, there was one other minor language thing, it says, in the second bullet point bolded in the bottom, it says for grade K4, I don't know if that should be grades plural, probably should. I know, really, I was really nitpicking, sorry.
Should we amend it?
I don't know if that needs an amendment or not.
Nope, it's a typo.
It's a typo, yeah.
Great. Any other comments or questions about the transportation? Yeah, Lindsay, thank you.
I just want to make sure, if there was the school reconfiguration and all that transportation stuff, would we be needing to revise this with that, or is this, do you think, going to?
I think it would, I think it would work, and if we find at a future point that it needs future revision, we'll revise it again, but this, as written, I don't see concerns.
It also is consistent with Medowey and their policy, and we probably spent of the hour and quarter meeting or less, half an hour on the nuances of the transportation, and didn't include a lot of the procedures, because it's easy to revise the procedures, it's a little less easy to revise the policy. And when we signed off on it, we all agreed, especially Randy, that this was what was necessary in order to allow her to clarify what the transportation policy should be.
All right, all in favor of approving the transportation policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Seeing none, policy will pass. Section B, approve revised policy 2.7, compensation and benefits, do you have a motion?
I move the approval of the policy, the year, the difficulty with policy 2.7.
Could you get a second first? Could you get a second, please? Lindsay, second, and then go ahead and deal with anything.
The reason for it is that we have year-round employees who are governed by year-round, multiple-year contracts, and the policy that was in existence said that the superintendent could never give a contract to anybody within the system employed, so what we've done is create a legitimate exception for those who are year-round supervisory responsible. Multi-year contracts can be awarded, and, and so the language is simple, it's a limited group of people that have to fit the criteria of year-round with supervising responsibilities.
Thoughts, questions? The board. Seeing none, call for a vote, all those in favor of approving the revised policy 2.7, compensation benefits, John also approves, anybody opposed? See no opposition, any objections? No sentences, that'll pass.
I move the adoption of policy 3.1, unity of control, as you can see, we've-
Can we give a second? Oh, sorry, thank you. Give you a second for motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Kelsey, go ahead, Dick.
We've eliminated in the case of board members or committees requesting information or assistance without board authorization, the superintendent can refuse such requests that require, anyway, so we've changed it now, board members or committees may request information or assistance if information is not publicly available only with board authorization. So the principle is that if you really want a body of information as a committee, the board as a group needs to approve of the time and energy that the superintendent would have to expend in order to give that particular information. That way, it's the board, not the superintendent, that's turning down a board request.
So, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
I just, I guess I, it, to me, this seems overly cumbersome as a process for us as a board, I, just thinking, we have committees that are working with the superintendent directly, and there's information that they need to move forward, to then have to wait for two weeks, whatever it is, to get to a board meeting to say, Randy, could you, you know, can we get data on student transport, you know, transportation numbers and over the last five years, or whatever it is, or ask Sue for more budget information on X, Y, and Z, like, to, there's, I, it, because we've removed the language around whether it's a material amount of staff time or funds were disruptive. I, I agree with the, the idea in principle that it's keeping with, we don't want to be, we don't want to have to, we don't want to be asking Randy for, on the staff, for lots of extra time, and, you know, without, you know, with, with no way to say that's too much, but I also don't know that this process is-
But it's, if a board member really wants the information, and it's only one board member that wants the information.
But this says committees.
Or committees. If it's available, it's going to be provided, if it's not available and requires a lot of work, then the whole board should be involved in allocating the time necessary to provide the information, and it may be a delay, but-
I'm going to call it, John, you have your hand up?
Does this include the, the chair, you know, if Mel asks for some information, or Dick, and, you know, with a meeting coming up, does this include they have to get information from the board, any information from the superintendent?
It, it, the, the purpose is to allow any board member, any board member or any committee member to ask for information, and if it's a unique request, I would expect that committees themselves would agree that the information is, is needed, and it wouldn't take very long for the superintendent to say that it could be provided, but if it involves a lot of work, which is the issue that most people commented on, it should be a board-level decision with respect to whether or not the superintendent or staff time should be devoted to gathering together and presenting information in an alternative way, not yet put together by the superintendent.
John, did you want to follow up on the comments?
Yeah, I, I think it should, you know, I don't want to put more on Mel's point, but I think this is feasible to go, the question, put to the chair first, and, you know, to see if it's reasonable, and I think all the policy was fine, but I agree with them that this is, um, this is-
Can I get any other questions?
I guess I, I don't, sorry.
Okay. We could revise it very quickly, but following your lead by saying with approval of the chair.
Let's, go ahead and let Ben.
Well, I just, my question was, I just had a question for Randy, was whether you were feeling that this needed to be revised, based on-
Yeah, I feel like this, I don't know, I don't remember where this came from, I feel like it might have been something from feedback from you as board members on your, your like, thing, your monitoring reports. I, I, I was just thinking that, I, I agree that I can see that this could be overly restrictive, and that I can imagine that there would be times when it is reasonable and appropriate for a request to come through the chair for something that really is relevant that we should do, and, and the superintendent can always say, I get that you think it's reasonable, but this is going to take extensive amount of time, and I want the board to vote on whether or not our office should actually execute it. I almost feel as if the superintendent should have that, that, within the unity of control, the ability to say, yes, I think it's going to take too long, or, no, you know, in the-
That's the current language, though.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't know, I don't recall, I don't think it came from me, I do think it came from your monitoring report feedback, but, so somebody on the board thought-
It came up several times, and it was, it was the suggestion, basically, that it's a board-level responsibility, if information is not available, that if the board wants it done, then- it done, then it's reasonable for the superintendent's time to be allocated to provide it. In almost every case, when it can be provided, Randy provides it.
Yeah, just the, the current language, it says, you know, in the case of without board authorization, superintendent could assign. And if so, if somebody says, you know, I really wanted that, and I think Randy's being tough on me, that they can get board authorization. And I think the language is, it is.
Are there any new questions or new thoughts about this? I'll go ahead and call for a vote, and if we decide to approve it, we will be adopting the new language. If we oppose the approval, I'm going to assume, and I guess I'm asking you, Randy, that means that the old language would stand?
Correct.
Jeff?
So everybody's fine with the old language, is that what I'm hearing? Because something, it came from somewhere, but if everybody's fine with the old language, then I'm fine with the old language. You're fine with the old language?
Fine with the old language.
Well, then I draw the motion.
Kelsey, sorry. Great. Okay. Motion withdrawn.
It came from her.
We are not.
Don't blame her.
I know, this is, I feel like I've talked a lot tonight. It was like you, like, I know what's going on, but I just wanted to express gratitude to the Policy Committee for doing all this work. Despite the fact that we didn't approve all of the suggestions, I thank you for the time and effort put in.
We're trying to solve problems.
I'll second that.
I oppose.
Okay, moving on to monitoring of policies 4.3, 4.4. I believe that is in your agenda packet, yes? And that is just for us to look over. We're doing much better on the amount of people responding to these surveys. That's great. Let's go up to the work board. I'm going to assume everybody's had a chance to look over them. Does anybody have anything that they feel like we need to add to the work plan, or if there's anything in here that was significant that we need to address? Do you want a color printer?
Maybe on this page, it's really more obvious. I don't know, I would set it in my email, but.
Do you want color copies if I print it?
Or creating grayscale so that it's easier to see the colors. The red is up at the top, and so substantial compliance is 45.5 and 54.4 percentage. Okay. Work plan, I need, let's move on to the work plan. Does anybody have any changes? Let's talk about the work plan. This is just for distribution. Randy, anything we should be noting on that?
The work plan?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Do we need to add the timeline to it since we didn't do it tonight?
Well, it's, it wouldn't necessarily go on there, but you'll, I'm going to email it, email it to you. Let me figure out what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Still a little, you know, wishing it was in there.
So what we have coming up next, the monitoring policies of 3.0, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3. I'm certain Celeste will send out an email for us to respond to shortly with that. We'll see if she can get 100%. And on to exciting news. Jim, could you help us with legislative updates?
Basically, the thing is now we actually do have two bills. We've got the House bill that we all talked about before. The Senate redid a bunch of, you know, some of the key, just to kind of want to do some of the key differences, you know, Randy mentioned earlier, the, you know, the House version had block size minimums, which we were actually kind of supportive of in the direction of, you know, forcing districts to do something. The Senate bill does not have that. The, the intent of having minimum size of schools is the crazy number of 450. The House still has that as intent. The Senate bill doesn't have any of that. One of the biggest differences in my mind is the House bill had a group of former superintendents, school board, or, or school business managers, and a few legislators working on drawing up to three maps. Very public process. It seemed like it was going to be, it was, it was laid out as a very public process. So allowing for, you know, people to have input to what those three maps might look like. The Senate is, is, you know, a couple, you know, whatever, three senators, three House members, or in some place in the room, and fair enough, you know, it could have a lot of meetings. Presumably, you know, the public input allowed, but, but again, people who don't necessarily have any background in education are going to draw one map unless they can't agree on it, then they'll have two maps. The, you know, it is worth noting that, you know, considering the source of all, the, the Senate bill is a lot friendlier to independent schools, as one would expect. You know, one of the big differences from the independent school perspective is the House bill had that provision in there that said, you know, approve, you could use approved schools that had at least 51% of their students public paid, you know, now. And the Senate bill drops that to 25%, which would, you know, pull in some additional schools. Both of them being more restrictive than today, you know, you are requiring them to have, you know, for approved schools, you're requiring them to have, you know, some minimum number of public, so it can't be, you know, they have two kids, you know, they're not, they're not okay if they have two out of 400 kids who are public paid now. The, both of them, you know, as far as the funding, the funding formula, I don't know that they're already real, you know, I couldn't find the real differences between the two.
I think the most significant, well, two things. In the Senate bill, they added weights for middle and high school, and there's really no evidence that that's needed based on the original calculations for the funding formula. It was all included in there. So now that kind of throws off the formula itself. The second thing, and this is the piece that is, I, is, is concerning to me, is there can, the Senate bill is considering a weight for special education, and I have concerns about that. Whether and where that's going to go, I don't know. Well, I'm going to really monitor that closely under Senate Finance, but putting a weight for special education, I think, is, on its surface, a terrible idea. But we'll see what happens in Senate Finance. I anticipate they will say that, but let's keep an eye on it.
So we have, you know, two competing bills right now, and there are things to like or not like about each of them. I think we're going to have to stay really close to this and continue to dig in. I advise everybody to actually take some time to, you know, go through this. I provided a couple of, a couple of documents with it. One, the, while Legislative Council has done a comparison of the two, it'll drive you nuts trying to, trying to read that. The, but the VSPA provided a much easier to read comparison of the two, the two bills. I would definitely take the time to go through that comparison, get some real detail and get some things that you're, you know, identify things that you find worrisome and bothersome. We need to keep discussing this. We're going to have the opportunity to provide input into the process. And I think it's going to be really important that we kind of put our heads together and come up with some useful, you know, input to that process. One key thing.
Jim, can I ask real quick? You were, you talked about the table that the VSPA put out comparing.
Yeah.
They put theirs out on the 28th, but it was passed on the 1st. Is it, was it still the same? Was there any changes?
Well, it's, it's been updated. I'll, I'll send out, it was, it was, it was a version 8.1 at that point. Now, it was 9.1 that passed.
Okay.
So there is an update. Actually, the VSPA today sent the, the, the email out.
It did, okay.
And that's comparison to 9.1.
There's good docs in that email. It's worth reading.
Now, one thing that, you know, just talking, this is really, you know, this, thanks to, thanks to your good job you've done here. One thing that has been nagging at me a little bit, and I think that it's, it was nagging Randy much more, and I think it's going to be really important things to note, is both House Ed and Senate Ed, when they're going through this stuff, they're up there in the clouds, they're doing 30,000 sort of foot, you know, work, and, you know, how do we move the pieces and all of this? When it comes into, when it comes down to either of these, we're, we're put in place pretty much as, you know, they're now presented. We have a lot of concerns, you know, how are they going to break up the districts and all? But we have, you know, one of the things in, in today's VSPA email was, you know, estimates of what this means by district.
By county. By county.
By county, and then by.
By district, yep.
Yep. And you can look at, and it's, you know, a little less friendly to us than we thought it was, it was going to be, and that's because of some of the changes of the way it's going around. But one thing you really, that nobody's much focused on that is, when this goes into place, you know, this is like, you know, we've talked about the foundation formula, it's a more, more fair way of determining, okay, here's how much money you really need. All this is going to drastically change the amount of taxes people are paying in each town. It is going to drastically change how much money is available for your school districts. Then there's the add-on where you can say, I need some more money, and I get charged, you know, you know, in, in the old days, it was a double charge to you. Now, it could be worse than a double charge, or it could be better than a double charge. But it's a significant additional money. I don't think anybody has really focused on the implications of actually implementation of, of this sort of stuff. This, I agree wholeheartedly with, you know, Randy's way, people are going to go nuts when this goes into place. So I think we've got, we have to start thinking about that and maybe presenting that as a part of, you know, the, the actual implementation of whatever does get implemented. A lot more thought has to go into, you know, what that means and, because, you know, at this point, if they came up with certain maps for us, we could say, okay, we'll come out okay on that, but we need to, to, to assess in advance whether or not we're going to have essentially, you know, every town being pissed off about something.
Right.
For every district.
And I'll, I'll just, just to help, help further explain that for a moment, that one of the, the principles of the, the, the funding changes is to increase the grand list to provide some greater stability. But in the short run, what that will mean is that those districts, current districts that have not spent a lot on education, we have significant variability across the state. Those low-spending districts will be, they're having a ton more money pumped into the system for them, which is going to increase their tax rates. Not because they want that money or want their tax rate, but in order to make sure that those kids are having the same opportunities as others. Other districts, current districts, are going to be losing funds because they are spending significantly more. So you're going to have those folks who are frustrated and upset because they've pumped money into the system and they valued that. So you're going to now have new school boards, new districts, new superintendents, with a whole new district of many angry people for very different reasons. And, and so I feel very strongly that we need to be, we need to be talking about it. We need to be thinking about letting all of this play out so that people understand what it currently is and make sure that there are safeguards put in place or guidance, guardrails, or limiters that make the transition in the process. I don't know. I don't even know what the right word is. But, but it, the way it's written right now, you look at some of those districts with significant increases in money coming to them, the, those taxpayers will not be able to continue to live where they're living. Like, that's not acceptable. So anyway, this is a very passionate topic for me. You know, every once in a while, I get my things, and this is one of them for sure. So.
With these numbers, whatever, whichever weights they used in this particular one Joint Fiscal Office put together, so probably pretty good stuff, but there have been too many different versions of the numbers. Tocot and Green, we currently have a $36 million budget. The model would provide us with $33 million, $3 million short. Southwestern Vermont Union Elementary School District, so down in Bennington, you know, current $25 million budget, you would give them $35 million, an extra $10 million, just a 40% increase in their budget.
And, and like, we, we need to be aware of this and be able to provide input to, to the, the finance, you know, Senate Finance is who has this now, and I'm sure that they're looking at it, but Agency of Education, I know, has the same concerns. Superintendents have the same concerns. So I think this is the time to start elevating.
Right, because it's a, it's, it's coming together. Some parts are logical, but since nobody's paid attention to what it actually means when you put it in place, it varies on, it's, it's going to be a very interesting summer.
John, you've had your hand up for a while up there. Did you have anything you wanted to ask anymore?
Yeah, Jim, do you see both these bills solving the Carson problem? Are there any religious schools with 25% tuition students?
Well, it, it, it depends upon what they decide, you know, the, the, you know, to tell you the truth, like, the House bill was only including supervisory districts. And then there are limitations on which independent schools you could use. It could potentially, you know, knock out a lot of the independent schools that currently, you know, have, have, have small amounts of public tuition. The, the, the Senate bill specifically includes both SDs and SUs. So you could end up having supervisor unions, multiple districts under with different choice patterns, which could, and, and with the 25% instead of the 51%, you know, sure item, there'd be more independent schools. It's still, you know, some of this could knock out. It doesn't, doesn't directly, but indirectly, it could have an impact.
Yeah, John, I don't know what the percentages are of religious school enrollment. Like, I don't know what that is, if there are any that, that they might be up at that level. I don't know the answer to that.
Ben, do you have a question?
Well, maybe we could, if others don't want to get into the weeds on this, I can ask you afterwards, but I'm just curious about how this new funding formula gets around the, the original reason why the funding formula was changed however many years ago, being unconstitutional to not provide.
Are you talking about in 96?
What are your, the.
Brigham.
Brigham decision.
Yep. Because it seems like they're, they're creating provision for a district, for towns to be able to choose to, that can afford to pay more.
That's it, but, but the, the additional map, it's the foundation formula now is, you know, everybody gets the same amount, that if they deem that adequate to, you know, that's providing, that's enough to provide equal educational opportunities to every kid in the state. The, the add-on amount is a limited amount, and frankly, the, the add-on amount is they've, they've set it at the, the, the district in the state with the least tax capacity is, is .0. And if, if, and if they want to add a dollar of funding, it's basically going to cost them a dollar. If you have a lot more tax capacity, you may be paying $3.
To get a dollar.
For your dollar of education. And what happens, you only get the $1, and the other $2 goes into the state construction fund for schools. That's the current play.
The House version only limited the above-block spending, so to speak. If you want to typify it as that, as only a 10% increase.
Max 10%.
Yeah.
And it's not 10% year over year, it's 10%, so it doesn't keep growing. The gap doesn't get wider.
But anyways, Jim said, the Brigham thing's solved by equal tax effort, you know, you just won't get, you won't get all the money you raise if you're a wealthy community.
Right.
Yes, that's what we're through, construction.
It was, it was tiptoeing around, though.
Yeah. Yeah.
So...
Go ahead, Dick.
So, basically, they took our supervisory union, and especially the Teconic and Green, and didn't acknowledge in the cut in our funding that we created a responsible bare-bones budget. And then took other districts and didn't take a look at the way the budgets were formed?
Well, they, you know, they're trying to come up with a one-size-fits-all, which almost, you know, it's almost never going to work really well. To me, one of the things I would love to do out of this is actually explain all these differences.
Right.
I think that would be a wonderful exercise across the state. Why are some getting, why is this one district getting an extra 40%, and why is this district losing 25?
Isn't that number...
They started explaining that, then you might start to understand what we need to do about our schools.
Right.
Most of it's the weighting.
Is, yeah, I was going to say, isn't that number based on per people and weighting of those pupils?
I'll tell you, there, you know, I think you can, one thing that I've seen so far, and this is not a scientific study or anything, but districts that are way underfunded now, they're getting big increases.
Correct.
Some of the highest spending districts in the state are getting big drops.
Right.
So that raised the question of, are they actually, you know, are those high-spending guys wasting money? Maybe. And, you know, we know the other guys are skimping on their kids, but I can't say, I can't say that that's a clear... That's why they need to do the study.
Yeah, the teachers get paid more in shipping count than they do in California, kind of, things like that.
Right.
And I would guess that, you know, I really honestly, through, you know, everything that I've been looking at this year, I think a lot has to do with overstaffing in districts, because again, 80% of your costs is your people working there, and all you need to do is that 10% overstaffing, and all of a sudden, you're what you think is great for your kids, but it's blowing your, you know, your budgets out of the water.
So these numbers are sort of interesting, but they don't mean a hell of a lot until you really put district boundaries.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
In an effort to get a little bit closer to our departure time, is there anything unique or specific that you want from Jim? Let's say that now, otherwise we can always reach out, and it sounds like there's a lot of reading.
I think we will try to keep everybody, try to keep everybody as updated as possible. The legislative update is going to be...
Thank you, Jim. Super appreciate it. And we'll have VSPA meet, so it's pretty much the week after this, so we'll get more updates. Look, moving on to, let's see, future agenda items. I know on the future agenda, it looks like next month, I believe, we are legally bound to appoint a new member residing in Danby and a new member in Mount Paver. Suzanne, this is Suzanne's last meeting. June 3rd, July 1st, okay, okay. We've got one more for Suzanne.
Herb, you still got a cake.
Herb is gone, right, I know. Ice cream?
Ice cream cake.
There you go.
Ice cream.
But as far as I understand, we have no applicants for either of those positions at this moment. We have reached out to former board members and have had some discussions, though there's been no confirmed interest or even suggested interest at this point.
No Alex?
So, yeah, yep. So if anybody knows anybody in Mount Paver or Danby, and I know that Bob's been doing a good job trying to get the word out to those communities, but still no applicants. I believe we'll also be... Excuse me?
I apologize. I've been, here's the beginning, my state line said I'm from Mount Paver, and I really apologize. I did just send in a simple CV this afternoon after speaking with Herb Bogdan a few times, so I'd like to volunteer on behalf of Mount Paver. You have me, consider.
That's great.
Thank you. We'll pass that, we'll make sure that information gets...
Okay. It's probably just Celeste, so we'll check on that. I'll check on that tomorrow.
Great. Thank you for speaking out, Dave.
Thank you.
You said Dave, yes, that's what I'm seeing you as. Dave or David?
Yes, Dave. Dave or David, I don't really know yet. Dave's fine.
Okay, thank you. I also believe we'll be appointing a new student member next month. Is this Oliver's last meeting, or is it Oliver?
He should be here in June.
Oliver will be here in June, okay.
Well, yeah, technically.
But we may have an appointment ready. We may have a name ready for the presentation.
Yes.
We have scheduled meetings for next week, and we have, I think, three applicants, correct?
Correct.
So it's just an update, just letting you know that is coming up around the day. Anything else for future agenda ideas? You all folks would fill out your board self-evaluation?
It does, wasn't it, included in this packet?
If it is not in the packet, you should all have it electronically.
Oh, it is.
It was.
It's in here.
It was, because...
Not in this.
Oh, Randy didn't forget. You guys looked it up online. I apologize. I've not been recording around on this, so...
Yes, she did. I think.
It's in there, it's in mine.
Yeah.
I'll also add to the future agenda that I will have the last three months worth of
Pack a page for it to go.
self-evaluation included in the agenda, so that's okay. Next meeting day is June 3rd at 6:30, Floodbrook School, and we will also do the meets.
We have a special one from Randy.
We were one, twice.
I don't, I think, let me think about this for a second. Is it on the work plan that it's at Floodbrook?
It's on the agenda. Let me look in the work plan. You're right about that one.
I think that that was because, it's, well, no, because Courier's, yeah, I don't know. I'm trying to think about what the conversation was.
I just remember two were of bad weather.
And so when we were trying to build this, we paid attention to that, although it looks like there's one in December. We are trying to avoid that, but...
Is that something we should change or can change?
Well, it looks like it's, you know, the sequence is Sunderland, Floodbrook, Courier, MEMS, Dorset, BRSU, Floodbrook, Courier, MEMS, Sunderland. Yeah, but then the annual meeting throws things too, so, but it is, it is pretty stable here.
It's fine. I was just, when she said that, I was like, man, she's been there a lot.
Yeah.
I wonder if we're going to flood because of the change, because of the proposals. I'm trying to remember if there's a decision to do that, I can't recall.
They missed one.
The H1, or the H2?
No, that was at Dorset, when we presented the H21.
I had other, I don't think there's any other business, right? So if we're not going to change that tonight, then I think there's only one more motion on the table.
Don't we have public comment?
Dave, I'll move for adjournment.
Public comment, public comment, public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, public comment. Public comment, I'm so sorry.
It'd be great to hear the whole meeting.
You know, Tom Lawrence, I'm Dylan. I guess my only recommendation, I would love to see, as the lone member of the public, the update more towards the beginning of the meeting.
Which update?
The legislative update. I think that's...
Okay, it's always in the package.
Yeah, but I think, you know, when there's like, people here, it'd be nice to get that out of the way, take some of the pressure off of you guys. I know I've been a little vocal in the past, but I think a lot of it is coming from the state, and I think that'd be good to see while people are still here. And the only other thing is, I appreciate the Floodbrook, the pause, even though it doesn't affect my school, my wife works up there, I know the communities, and I explore up there, and it's a really difficult place sometimes to travel, and so I appreciate the pause. I think that's probably one of the best decisions, best decisions I've heard since this rear work started. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to see if there's anybody else online?
Anybody else online have a comment for public comment?
Somebody.
There's somebody. Lisa? I see a Lisa...
Giadi.
Giadi?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, I just have a quick question as, I guess as my whole school library, and a couple of schools in our district, we received notification from the Vermont School Library Association about Act 150, which is a model selection policy that was distributed to school boards April 7, and I just didn't know if that was going to be on, whether it's Teconic and Green, or maybe it's for the RSC meeting.
It's not a required policy, so it won't come to any of our boards.
Oh, okay. That's, it's noted.
Should it?
Well, it's, I mean, it's following the same process that we use around taking any policies, developing procedure if we need to. We've already got a procedure in place, so no.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else for public comment? I apologize for skipping that. Thank you for notating that, whoever called me out on that. So that's it. Dick?
I move for adjournment.
Great. And Suzanne, seconds. And the time is 8:48.